You're listening to Good Morning Gwinnett, a division of Noise Media Network. Hosted by Audrey Bell Kearney, sharing stories about people and places around beautiful Gwinnett County and beyond. Monday through Thursday at 10 a.m. Southern Living at its best.
Good morning, good morning, good morning, all my Gwinetians out there in Gwinnett land and all of you around the world, listen to the sound of my voice. It is a beautiful fall day here in Gwinnett County. It is fifty-eight degrees going up to a high of only sixty-eight degrees. So not like yesterday. Yesterday was like seventy-four, seventy-five. Still not bad though. I ain't complaining because it's still beautiful. I could be somewhere right now where it was ten degrees. I've been at that place before. Don't want to be there. So I will not complain. Hope you're having a wonderful morning on this beautiful November eleventh. It's also Veterans Day. So we want to show our vets some love for serving our country and protecting us against um, the, the bad forces that be. So uh, we salute you veterans and, and, and all of you who have laid your line, your life on the line for us and to protect us and keep us safe. So we salute you. You can't see me, but I'm saluting you right now. It's also National Sunday Day. So you got, you got Veterans Day and you got National Sunday Day. So here's the thing. Find a vet, take them out, give them a Sunday. I know it's kind of cold, right, for a Sunday? Yeah, but a nice hot fudge walnut sundae with some whipped cream on top. Sounds good, right? So if you got a vet in your family or in your life, you know, invite them out to the ice cream shop. The ice cream shop would be happy, especially if it's somewhere cold because nobody really likes to buy ice cream in the wintertime. Although it's not winter yet, in some places it feels like winter. So um, go out. They, they will be happy to see you and it'll do, it probably, it will probably put a smile on a vet's face. You know what I'm saying? All right, let's get on with this show. We're gonna get on with our horoscopes brought to you by Notre Des Struggles, Michael Thieson for today, Thursday. Uh, November the eleventh. So today is eleven eleven, twenty twenty-one. That sound good, right? Eleven eleven. Think that's supposed to be like a lucky day, like four ones, like if you're into numerology and all that stuff, go look up what eleven eleven means. It means something. So it's a, it means something in numerology. I don't know exactly, but my daughter goes, ooh, today's a good day. It's eleven eleven. I'm like, yes, I have no idea what it means, but okay. My daughter is my guru, y'all. Like she keeps me, she keeps me on point when it comes to my spirituality and being grounded and knowing what's happening in the universe and the planet and the stars. She's my guru. So she said eleven eleven is a good thing. So I'm like, okay, great. Eleven eleven it is. I need to bring her on. Like in the show sometimes, especially at the beginning of the, of the month. I think I'll bring her on so she could talk to you about what's happening in the stars. Anyway, let's get on with these horoscopes brought to you by Notre Des Struggles, Michael Thieson. We're gonna kick it off like we always do and that is with Aries. You will be viewed as a sensitive compassionate individual and others will ask for your advice. Help elders in your family, get busy trying to make more money. Yes, Aries, get busy trying to make that moolah because you know the holidays are coming. Ah, and we all tend to overspend at the holidays. Not all of us. Some of us don't spend at all. They like, forget that crap. That's just a way to make you spend more money. It is. It is, it really is. But it's enjoyable. Like I love it. Like my sugar baby said to me this morning, she said, Gia, I want the tent. So she wants a tent and I'm gonna buy her that tent. She wants a tent. I don't know what she gonna do in the tent. Um, maybe her mother gonna let her sleep out on the patio or something. I have no idea. And it's, it's a gated patio, so she can't go anywhere. But she wants a tent. And so she keeps asking for this tent. So this morning she said, Gia. Uh, you give me the tent? I was like, I'm gonna get you the tent, sugar baby. So sugar baby is getting the tent. I said, Santa Claus is gonna buy you a tent. I had to let her know that it was Santa Claus, not Gia. Taurus, don't get involved in joint ventures. Don't overspend on friends and children. Take care of your own responsibilities before you help others. You know, Taurus, you gotta think about when you get on an airplane, right? So today you're on an airplane and the airplane is in trouble. You got to put the oxygen mask on yourself first and then put the oxygen mask on the person next to you because you need to be able to breathe so you can help the other person breathe. So today, take care of your own responsibilities. Don't get involved in joint ventures and don't overspend on friends and family. Put your own oxygen mask on first two day Taurus. Okay? Okay. Gemini, make sure that you have all the pertinent facts before taking action. Compromise will be necessary. Social activities will be satisfying. Yes, social activities. What you gonna do today, Gemini? Yeah, compromise will be necessary, but social activities are gonna be satisfying. So compromise a little bit, it's gonna be necessary. Then get out and socialize because it's gonna be satisfying. So you may not want to even compromise today. But the stars are telling you compromise and then socialize and you're gonna have some fun. All right? Make sure you have all the pertinent information before you take those actions though, however. All right, okay, cool. Cancer, you can make wonderful contributions to any organization that you join. Sudden changes concerning coworkers may surprise you. Coworkers may not be giving you all the pertinent information. All right, listen here. Coworker's holding back on you, Cancer. So watch your back. You got them backstabbers. Smile on your face all the time. They wanna take your place. Backstabbers, backstabbers. Watch yourself, Cancer, because you got them, they looking at you. You know, they got some sudden changes going on. They're not giving you all the information because it could be some little jealousy going on there, envy. So watch yourself. Also, whatever organization you join right now, you're gonna make, you're gonna be a wonderful contribution. Yep, yep, you're gonna help them a lot. So don't be afraid to join an organization or if you already in an organization, you're gonna be able to help them out a lot. All right? Leo, accommodate others, but not before you do your own thing. Do the proper safety checks before you go out. Put your energy into self-improvement programs that promise to make you into a better you. Yes! Try to get out and socialize. Today is a socializing day, isn't it? People are off the day, off work because it's Veterans Day. So you gotta go out and, and socialize today. Here's the other thing too. Put some time and energy into self-improvement pro- programs that promise to make you um, into a better you. Anytime I can work on being a better me, that's what I'm gonna do. I was talking to my daughter about that this morning. We were talking about how people think and how they do things. And um, sometimes people just um, they don't think and do things like you. And I was telling her, you know, at the end of the day, don't let people change you from being who you are. You be who you are, who you, who you are. Let them be who they are. Excuse me. Because you can't change them. What's gonna be the best you you can be? So if you got a program that's gonna help you be a better you, do that thing. Because that's the only person you can change is yourself. So what's gonna be the best you you can be? All right, all right, cool. Virgo, you get out of shape easily if you don't keep up on, keep on top of things. Too much talk leads to hassles. Limitation with females could lead to unfortunate circumstances. All right. You will get out of shape if you don't keep on top of things. Listen, tell me about getting out of shape. So we brought back on our challenge, y'all. We back on the weight loss challenge. My husband, my husband won the last time, but he's not into this one. He, he dropped out. He quit. He's, he quit on the challenge that he won last time. I can't even figure that out. He beat the snot out of us. Like he beat us by big numbers, like twenty pounds. And he quits this time around. I'm like, why would you quit? And so now it's, it's uh, five, was it four of us in there? The pot is worth four hundred dollars. Yes, four hundred dollars after Christmas. Yes. Um, it would have been five hundred had he stayed in, but it's four hundred dollars and the person that wins the most weight by March the eighth. Um, yeah, March the eighth because we just officially kicked off on Monday, wins the pot. So we back on this, we're back on the challenge again and I don't know what I'm gonna do. But listen, Virgo, you don't want to get out of shape. Yes, don't, don't be like me. Yeah. So join, listen, if you want to join the weight loss challenge, that's what I'm, listen, that kind of keeps me motivated. It really makes me, nah, I didn't, I didn't, I did lose nothing, six pounds. Over like ninety days. That sucks. I didn't gain, so that was a good thing. I did lose six pounds, but I didn't gain either. So this time I'm going for thirty-five pounds by March the eighth. That's my goal. That's my, that's my ultimate goal too. Not just one, not just the weight loss for right now. That is my ultimate goal, lose these last thirty-five pounds. I've been saying that forever. I've been saying that for like three years. I'm still trying to get there. And so this is my um, this is my attempt to get there by March the eighth. That's a lot, right? What I got? December, January, February, March? No, I got three, three months? I had three, four months to try to, to try to drop them thirty-five pounds. All right, Virgo, you might want to join me. Too late to join the challenge, but you might want to join me anyway. I am going to a song. I'll be right back after the sun to give you more of the horoscopes brought to you by Notre Des Struggles, Michael Thieson. Stay tuned. Welcome back, welcome back. It's your girl Audrey Bell Kearney, bringing you daily horoscopes brought to you by Notre Des Struggles, Michael Thieson. We're gonna pick it up with Libra. Make sure that you make reservations early. Unforeseen changes in your location are apparent. Take time to find out all you can. Yeah, make sure you make reservations early because sometimes you want to go somewhere and you get there and a reservation needed. Here's, here's the thing. If you're planning on going somewhere that everybody's talking about, check and make sure to see if you need a reservation. And if you do, make it early. If people are talking about it right now, chances are you need reservations. So just check and make sure. Unforeseen changes in your location are apparent. Uh, I know you want to hear that, but that could be a good thing. Don't think of it as a bad thing. It could be a good thing. Okay, Libra? Scorpio, you can clear up important legalities and sign contracts. They, pleasure trips will ease attention between you and your mate. This is a great day to start a new health regime you've been talking about. Yes! Scorpio, I started on Monday. So come on, join us. Join us. It's a great day. I know people like, it's the holiday time. I know that you gotta have some discipline. Trust me, I know. I'm going to my aunt's and I'm gonna eat me some carrot cake and a piece of ham because I like carrot cake. Let me say this, I only like her carrot cake. And so I'm only around her once in a blue moon um, because we live so far apart. So I'm gonna get me some carrot cake. So I know on Monday after Thanksgiving, I ain't looking for no weight loss on this, on the, on the scale. If I did, but, but I've lost weight during holiday times, which is crazy. Which is really crazy. I went, I remember going to Weight Watchers a long time ago and I get on the scale. I think I lost like four pounds. And everybody like, oh my, they were cheering me like, yeah, like who the heck loses weight doing, and I think it was Thanksgiving, doing Thanksgiving. Me, because I don't really like a lot of stuff. Like I like stuffing and that's pretty much all I eat, stuffing and cranberry. And um, my aunt is the, she makes carrot cakes and that's the only time I eat it. So I'm not a big sweets person. So I don't really eat potato pie really. I just started kind of eating it just a little bit. Like I really, you can't see me saying, I want a sweet potato pie. I just, I've, I've never eaten it. I never, I didn't like it. I love sweet potatoes, but I never really liked sweet potato pie. And so um, if my husband makes a caramel cake, I will eat that, but not a lot because sometimes some sugars make me feel sick. So I have to be careful. So I will lose weight during the holidays, which is crazy. Sagittarius, send it, sudden romantic, romantic connections may be short-lived. Make changes in your domestic scene. Situations in your personal life are moving a little fast lately. Okay, what you got going on there? You got some sudden romance changes that's gonna, gonna be short-lived. What does that mean? Making changes in your domestic scene, just moving things around in situations in your, in your personal life, moving a little bit fast lately. Listen, time, listen, time waits for nobody Sagittarius. So you gotta keep up with the movement. Just try to keep up. It's not waiting on you. Keep up. Change your shoes and keep up. Capricorn, join humanitarian groups and let your leadership ability take over. A change is a good, a change is as good as a, a rest. Huh? A change is as good as a rest. Okay, I don't know what that means. Don't go looking for change. But it's good. You just said it was good. Deal with the needs of children and get into groups that deal with self-awareness. All right, get into some group that, that help you find out who you really are, Capricorn. Who are you? Stop being an impersonator, right? I didn't say an imposter. I said an impersonator. Because sometimes, sometimes an impersonator look at the person next to them and they want to be them, so they start impersonating them. They start, they start to say things, do things like that other person and they forget who they are. So get into groups that deal with self-awareness so you can find out who you are and become self-aware. Okay, great. Aquarius, it's time to get yourself back on track. A new you could help your attitude. Oh man, everything is about fixing you today. Listen, go ahead on. A new you could help your attitude. You can surprise members of your families, which in turn will bring you a pat on the back. Listen, if, if you need to make a new you to change your attitude, do your thing, Aquarius. I'm telling you, I'm working on me every day. I'm working on my demeanor. I'm working on my manner. I'm working on it all. I'm a work in progress. Everybody is. And if you say, if somebody say they're not, then they're lying. You are constantly a work in progress because you can always do something to make yourself better. There is some area of your life that is not right. Right? And you know that. So there's always something to make you better. The best you you can be. That's all I'm saying. Last but not least, my fellow fish Pisces, take a look at investment opportunities. All right. You can pick up valuable information if you listen to those with more experience. You'll be able to get good advice if you listen to close friends or relatives you respect. Okay? Listen, you got to listen, fish. You gotta li- listen before you, before you uh, start out on them investment opportunities, you need to listen first. So you can get that valuable information from those who are more experienced in that investment that you're thinking about taking a look at. So listen first, then take a look at the investment because now you got the knowledge that you need to make the proper decision. All right, okay? You'll be able to get good advice if you listen to close, close friends and relatives you respect. Listen, the key for us today, fish, is to listen. And I'm good with that. I'm so good with that. I'm so, I'm so good with listening. I'm gonna listen today. I don't know about you, but I'm gonna put my listening ears on, right? As if I got different ears, right? I'm gonna put my listening ears on. I'm gonna listen. I'm not gonna talk so much. The more, the most talking I'm gonna do today is right now, as I speak to you. All right, all right. All right, that's all the horoscopes I got for you today. I'll be back again on Monday to bring you more of the horoscope. That's because today is my Friday. And then I'll be back on Monday, God willing, to bring you more of the horoscopes brought to you by Notre Des Struggles, Michael Thieson. Yes, yes, yes. Let's get on with some news you can use. So Mariah Carey is giving away free McDonald's burger for the holidays. Free McDonald's. Yes! Okay, why McDonald's, I wonder? I used to love McDonald's, y'all. I really did. Now I rarely eat there. I mean, every once in a blue, I used to eat McDonald's at least once a week. Um, double cheeseburger and a french fry on the tea. That was my meal. But it started to make me feel sick. So, and I've tried, but every time I go back, it just make me feel horrible. And I was like, that's because I've been, I've, I've really been on a health kick for a minute. And I go back and forth with it and I, and I back, I backslide, as they say in church. I backslide every once in a while. And um, but I've tried to backslide McDonald's and every time I do it, it make me feel horrible. That's prob- that's probably because my system has purged that stuff out of my system. And even though my mind is saying, go get you a double cheeseburger and fry on the tea. I go get that thing and eat it and by the time I'm finished, I'm sick. Like, ugh, like God, why did I do that? So I haven't done that, but anyway. Mariah Carey is partnering with McDonald's and giving her fans one of the best gifts of them all. Free-ish, uh-oh, wait a minute. It said free-ish food. Free-ish. Now let's see what that free-ish means. McDonald's is debating, is de- debuting the Mariah menu next month in which the fast food chain is giving away a different free menu item each day between December the thirteenth and December the twenty-fourth. So that's the twelve days of Christmas problem. The catch is that it requires a one dollar minimum purchase and has to be ordered at, on the McDonald's app. That's pretty smart. Now listen, for those of you who think, well, why would I, why would I have to order on the McDonald's app? Because you got to download the app. When you download the app, now McDonald's has your information and they can send you coupons on your cell phone. That is why. That is called marketing, people. Marketing. So they probably paid Mariah a ton of money to get your app information. And they still gonna make a dollar. They're gonna make a dollar because somebody gonna buy the tea. You can't buy a french fry for a dollar. You can't buy anything for a dollar except for the sweet tea. That's the only thing you can buy. I think you may be able to buy a cookie for a dollar. But for the most part, nothing is a dollar except for the sweet tea and maybe a cookie. And I'm thinking that's just one cookie. I think it may be ninety-nine cent. But that's not the point. The point is to get your cell phone information through that app. Here's why. When there's an app, like Good Morning Gwinnett has an app, right? If you download the Good Morning Gwinnett app and I have things going on that I want to share with you, you can, you'll get a push notification. You get a notification on your phone saying, Good Morning Gwinnett is giving away something. I'm not gonna say that because people are like, I thought Good Morning Gwinnett was giving away some hot dogs. No, Good Morning Gwinnett is giving away something, right? That is a marketing tool for a company to stay in contact with the customers. So it is a smart move on the, on the, on the behalf of McDonald's, right? It's a great move because I'm sure Mariah Carey got a paycheck for that. And then you get a dollar, you get to get a sweet tea and a free meal. So everybody kind of wins in that situation. Pretty cool. I ain't mad at Mariah. I certainly am not mad at McDonald's. I am not. I need to come up with some kind of um, some kind of giveaway. Let me think about that. What can I give away? Christmas cookies? You gotta download the app though to get a, to get a Good Morning Cookie. Good Morning Gwinnett Cookie. I, I should have went, you know, chili cook-off is tomorrow. No, chili cook-off is Saturday. I should have had a um, I should have, I should have gotten me a table at the chili cook-off and I should have been out there giving away free cookies for everybody to download the Good Morning Gwinnett app. Why didn't I think about that? I should have, I should have been thinking about that. I didn't. But anyway, McDonald's, December the thirteenth through the twenty-fourth, free meal, download the app. Get, you gotta purchase something for a dollar and then you can get your free item for the day. Who knows what that is? I don't know. It could be anything. It could be a hash brown, a biscuit. I don't know. They didn't say what it was. They just said it changes daily for the, for that, that time. All right, cool. All right, I want to send out my condolences to um, Isaiah Banks. Um, he was a high school football player over at Norcross. In Norcross, he passed away Monday from non-football related medical issues while at home. Um, I, I just can't imagine what his family must be going through right now. He went to Paul Duke Stell High School and um, they lost him on Monday. His teammates found out that he was, he was gone. So my, my condolences go out to Isaiah family for your loss. I can't even imagine what that's like. I know it must be very painful. So just know that, that we over here, Good Morning Gwinnett, are thinking about you and your time of loss. And we pray that you get through this and that you are, that you stand strong together in Isaiah's absence. All right. Let's get on with some news you can use right now. So Gwinnett School District updates walk-in vaccination clinic schedule. Yep, yep, yep. They got a, they got a walk-in vaccination clinic schedule. Gwinnett County Public Schools has updated the schedule for its mobile vaccination clinic at certain high schools this month, this and next month. Um, the clinics offer two-shot Pfizer vaccines according to school district website. Those who are eligible and who completed their initial vaccine series at least six months ago, no matter the brand of US approved vaccine, may receive booster shots at the clinic. I just got my booster shot. Someone asked me, why would I do that? Why, like, why do you believe that the shot is gonna help you? I can tell y'all, up until my mom passed away, I was not getting the shot, right? Because I felt like most other people, they were putting something in my body. I didn't know what it was, but here's the thing. I lost my mom, who was adamant about getting the booster shot, about getting the vaccine. She was like, she was the first person said she was getting it. It's like, when it comes out, I'm getting it. And we were all like, we're not getting it. And she passed away and we all got it. And so I said to that person, I said, I'll take my chances with the booster if I feel like I'm gonna have more time with my daughter, my granddaughter and my brother, my, my niece and my nephews and the rest of my, my husband and the rest of my family and friends because I love them and I don't want to leave them. And so if it means me taking a booster shot or a vaccine to give me some more time to be, be with them, yes, I believe that. Some people don't believe it. They won't take it. They take the risk every day. They don't think it, it, they don't think that, they don't think that COVID kills. With all of the people who have died, they don't think it kills. So they won't take the booster. They won't wear masks. They won't do anything. They just believe that they, it, it won't happen to them. And I never thought it wouldn't happen to us. I never thought that we did all our precautions as much as we could. And it happened to my family twice with my uncle and my mom and then the best man at my wedding. And then I lost a cousin like um, a few months ago. So it happened twice. It happened like four times in my family. So you know, I can't tell people what to do because you're gonna do what you want to do. But if it's gonna give me, if I even feel like it's gonna give me more time with my family, I'm, I'm gonna do what I gotta do. But anyway, the school district sent in a newsletter, um, that communicated, that it will communicate expanded vaccination opportunities when local health officials open them up to younger children. The Center for Disease Control and Prevention last week approved a vaccine for children five to eleven years old. Now here are some of the upcoming clinics. Um, upcoming clinics are as follows. Brookwood High School, four thirty to seven thirty, Thursday, November the eleventh, and that's today. And December, November the second. Peachtree Ridge High School, three PM to seven PM, Monday, November fifteenth and Monday, December the sixth. Meadow Creek High School, four thirty to seven thirty, Tuesday, November sixteenth, December, uh, December date to be determined. Parkview High School, four thirty to seven thirty PM, Wednesday, November the twenty-fourth. Norcross High School, four thirty to seven thirty PM, Monday, November the twenty-ninth. South Gwinnett High School, three PM to seven PM, November the twenty-ninth, with a December date to be determined. Now for more information or to get that list again, go to ajc.com. It's all there. You can get the list there and find out more about the vaccinations and how to get your children or yourself vaccinated or get the booster. All right. I'm going to a song. I'll be right back after the sun to give you more of the rundown about what's going on in and around Gwinnett County. So stay tuned. Welcome back, welcome back. It's your girl Audrey Bell Kearney, bringing you the daily rundown about what's going on in and around Gwinnett County. Well, it's a lot going on right now. So apparently, apparently there was a big, there was a big deal going on because I talked about this yesterday. Um, uh, Representative Dixon decided, you know, he wanted to pass and put a bill on the table to make, uh, to get Gwinnett like five more commissioners and also to make the board, the board elections nonpartisan. Well, so far he has succeeded on one side. And right now they're in, in discussions right now, ten o'clock, talking about whether or not Gwinnett is gonna have nine commissioners plus the, plus the chairwoman or just stick to the four with the chairwoman. That's what the discussion is right now. As of yesterday, yes, yesterday, and the Democrats were pissed off. They said it got heated over there. As of yesterday. Um, they voted to have the bill for the um, what are the school board to be um, nonpartisan, the election to be nonpartisan. And a lot of Democrats were not, um, they weren't happy. They said Dixon blindsided his Democratic colleagues and the members of the boards that will be affected. He brought the legislation forward without discussing the proposed changes with the county commissioners, school board members or Gwinnett lawmakers. He did his own thing. He brought the legislation forward without discussing the proposed changes with the county commissioners, school board members, or Gwinnett lawmakers. He did his own thing. And we, listen, we're gonna go deep into this on Sunday. Yes, Popcorn Politics, be sure to tune in Sunday. We're gonna go deep on this because here's the thing. I just feel like, I just feel like people are making their own rules right now and there is no repercussions to the rules that they're making. They're just doing things that, that normally would not have happened and there are no, there are no repercussions for that. I think it's crazy. Um, and that's what's happening. It says, one person says, "I am disgusted by this hyper partisan power grab and will do everything in my power along with my colleagues to stop," it said Representative Sam Park. He was pissed. He said disgusted. He's a Democrat who chairs the Gwinnett delegation during, um, during the Wednesday process press conference. Um, Gwinnett voters would elect one chairperson and nine commissioners under the new legislation. That's what would happen. And then the school bill, they passed it already. They passed it already. The education bill passed out of the state and local government operations um, committee on Wednesday afternoon, a four to three, um, vote despite demands of Democratic legislation to have more time to discuss it. They was like, nope. We want it. We gonna pass it. Let me tell you something. It's gonna be, I, I just, I don't know. Our political atmosphere, I, I, right now it's crazy. It's been crazy for like the last five years. It just has. You know, it's just, that last president, he shook up everything. He made his own rules and everybody followed. What's, what's crazy to me is that nothing seemed to be, that, that seems to be nothing that could be done. That's the crazy part. Like people just don't, why have a democracy at all? Like if you could just do what you wanna do, change rules, redraw lines, you know, change the vote, it's like, I'm trying to figure it out. Like I really am. It's nuts. So anyway, that was, that's what happened. So now, you know, the school board election will be a nonpartisan election. Right now they're in talks, right now as I speak to you guys about whether, uh, whether or not we're gonna have nine commissioners versus four with the chairwoman, which will bring us to a total of ten. Right now we have a total of five, but if they get the vote, if this vote passes, we're gonna have ten. With five new ones coming on at election time. Um, this is crazy. It said Democrats took control of the county board commissioners in twenty twenty, the first time in nearly three years. The most diverse county in the state is now represented by all people of color on the board, including Hendrickson, who made history as Gwinnett's first black chairwoman. A lot of people think that, that, that the, that the, the move to, to, for these new bills are racially motivated, right? And Dixon has said that he, it was initiated because they got rid of Jay Alvin Wilbanks. They fired him back in July. So I guess he was pissed and they got together. Here's the thing, they get together and they make stuff happen. That's what's happening. You know, um, black people are running the board commissioners and they said that does not constitute because they're running the board of commission and board of education. That's not an emergency. That's what Democratic, uh, uh, Jasmine Clark said. So right now they feel like it's an emergency because all black people are running these boards, which is crazy, as if we're not qualified to do it. You know what I mean? So it's an emergency because the boards, both boards are black. All black. Well, not all black, cause Sam, um, um, Ben, Ben Cool is Asian, but he's a, he's a person of color. So it's nuts, right? It's, it's crazy. I, I, I just feel like it's gonna be, it's gonna be a lot of dirt slinging. It's, but my thing is, I'm still trying to figure out why, why can't anything be done? That's what I'm trying to figure out. Like, why do people just get to change the rules and, and nothing happens? So they changed, so, so Dixon changed the rules. He didn't follow the, the protocol, yet the bill passed. How is that possible? That's the part I need to talk about. We're gonna talk about that on Sunday, on Popcorn and Politics. This is not a political show. I just had to tell you the news. Um, but Popcorn and Politics, this Sunday at one PM, tune in live on LinkedIn, American One Radio, Facebook Live, YouTube Live, LinkedIn Live, American One Radio, and Roku. Tune in Sunday at one PM. Every Sunday, I talk politics, popcorn politics. Uh, and we're gonna talk about that. Why is that? Cause I need to understand. I'm still learning politics, right? Um, I find it intriguing because it's always some stuff going on. It's never a, there's not ever a same day in politics, never. I don't care where you look in the world, it's always something different. Cause there's always something, something crazy going on. I'm just telling the truth. Y'all know I'm telling the truth. Always something crazy going on in politics. I think it's, you know, but it's gonna be interesting. So I wanna, I'm talking about it. So make sure to tune in. This coming Sunday at one PM, I'll be on there live talking. Me and Derek, Derek J. Wilson will be talking politics. He's my political person. Like he, you know, he knows this stuff. So I'll be like, "Well, why is this?" And he tells me. Cause he knows. He's deep in it. Like I'm just getting it. He's deep in politics. Like, I think he was a political science major in college or something. I was a business major. Hence, me doing business, yes, that was me. Uh, Resurgence Orthopedics is, um, sharing warmth. Yes, they're, they're having a coat drive. And I know that's very important because it can get really cold, y'all. Even though we're in Georgia, it can get really cold. Um, uh, there are two offices, two, uh, resurgence orthopedic offices here in Gwinnett County. And they launched the thirteenth annual coat drive. I go to orthopedic, uh, resurgence because my knee has always bothered me and that's why I go when I need to get a shot. I haven't gotten a shot now probably in five years though. My knee must've been doing pretty good. No, maybe three years. No, maybe four. But that's why I normally go to get the shot in my knee because my knee used to bother me so bad. And it still does, but I kinda push past the pain these days. Anyway, the coat drive is, is open now and will run through November the nineteenth. Donations of new or gently used coats, scarves, hats, and gloves, and blankets will be accepted at twenty-four resurgence locations throughout the metro Atlanta area. We have two here in Gwinnett County. So there's one on Old Norcross Road over in Gwinnett County. That's the one that I go to. The coats will be donated to domestic violence and homeless shelters across Atlanta. As a safety measure this year, Resurgence Orthopedics asks that all donations be cleaned according to the manufacturer's specification, bagged individually before dropped off. So if you wanna participate in that, you can, um, check out resurgence, resurgence.com backslash, forward slash location, W W dot resurgence.com forward slash location. If you are in Gwinnett County, the one that I go to is located at seven fifty-eight Old Norcross Road in Lawrenceville. And there's also another one at sixteen hundred Medical Way. And that's suite one fifty in Snellville. So Gwinnett County, seven fifty-eight Old Norcross Road in Lawrenceville. I gotta, you know what? I got a coat, I got a vest that I can't fit. It's a beautiful vest. It's a fur vest. I've never worn it because it was too big. I was big and the coat was big. I was like, oh my God, I'm gonna look like a bear. So that wasn't, I'm just, I'm just being honest. I didn't like the way it looked. My daughter bought it, but she's tiny, so she wears them all the time. But she wears like an eight. You know, here I am wearing like eighteen and I got on this big old fur vest. I'm like, I'm not wearing that. But anyway, I kept the vest because I didn't wanna throw it away because she bought it for me, but I'm gonna donate it to, um, to the coat drive because it's a very nice vest. Um, it's beautiful. Actually, I just, I never wore it. Now I can't fit it because I don't look like a bear. Um, because I did lose a lot of weight, but it's too big now, so I can't fit it. So I'll be going to, I'm gonna have it cleaned. I think I need to put it in cleaners cause it's, it's been packed up for a long time. So I'm gonna put it, have it cleaned and drop it off. And you could do the same. Um, Gwinnett locations again, seven fifty-eight Old Norcross Road in Lawrenceville and sixteen hundred Medical Way, suite one fifty in Snellville. So if you wanna show some love to somebody and give them a coat, do that. I did a, um, Derek did a coat drive, not last year, year before last. And I'm telling y'all, it was, it was, it was just amazing. First of all, I had never done one before. I never participated and I was actually broadcasting live from the, um, I, I was broadcasting live from the coat, from the event. So it was a coat drive and a toy drive all together. And I remember my mom bought me this really pretty coat. It was burgundy. And I, and I wore it a couple of times, but then I lost all the weight and it was too big. So I might've worn it maybe two times, maybe? I, I don't even recall really wearing it at all. I might not have worn it at all. So I gave, I donated the coat because, and I, I don't throw away stuff that's good, y'all. So I donated the coat to the coat drive. And this one walked in, I'm never gonna forget it. It was a December day. It was cold and it was raining. And the reason I remember that, not because it was cold, because it was cold and raining. And I don't like being in the rain. It was cold and rainy and she walked in with her, I think she had two children and a husband. And she walked in and when they told them that they can pick a coat out, she grabbed that coat and she put the coat on and she just wrapped her arms around herself. And I was sitting all the way across the room, at the back of the room, on the other side of the room. And that just did something to me, like, oh my God. So there are people out there who really need a coat, right? Cause right now it's, it's kinda cold. Like, you know, fifty-eight degrees may not be bad, but if you got fifty-eight degrees, you have on no sleeves, no jacket, no sweater, you're just out, it's cold. Cause I, I have on long sleeves and I'm cold. And it's fifty-eight degrees. I'm in the house. And so, you know, you may not think that, that, um, you may not think that people need these things, but they really, really do. Um, you wouldn't think in a country like the United States that people need these things, but it really, they really, really do. Alright, so listen, the Gwinnett Chamber announces the twenty twenty-one Small Business Award winners. Yes, yes, yes. There's a full list at ajc.com. But I wanna, I wanna, I wanna talk about one winner that won. So, community contributor recipient, Home of Hope at Gwinnett Children's Shelter. They were an award winner. Now, I met, I met Maureen this past week. And when I tell you Home of Hope is a beautiful facility, it is a beautiful facility up in Buford. Uh, it serves, uh, young mothers and their children, helping them get back on their feet. That program is amazing, y'all. I didn't even know we had a program like that here in Gwinnett County. So it's a, it's a, it's a children's shelter. It's a, it's a mother and children's shelter. It is beautiful. I mean, fully stocked with food, clothing, toiletries, everything, beautiful rooms, beautiful, uh, uh, community areas for the, for the, for the people, for the young mothers and their children to play. They have playground. It's a beautiful campus up in Buford. So I can see why, uh, Home of Hope would have won. And Maureen, who is the president, is the executive director of that organization. They do some amazing work up there, life skills training. And so, um, uh, my client, Class Act Security Protection and Training Academy is gonna be partnering with Home of Hope to do some training for the women to show them how to, um, some self-defense techniques to help them have, be, not only be, have life skills, but how to protect themselves in bad situations. So we spent three hours up at Home of Hope on, I think it was Wednesday. And it was beautiful. It was beautiful. The campus is lovely. It's forty acres up there. They got a fire pit. Someone built a playhouse for the, for the kids. They got swing sets. They got, I think they housed twenty women at this time, twenty families at this time, which is a lot. And they take care of them. Let me tell you, let me tell you how the program works, right? If you are accepted, you gotta go through an interest interview first. But if, if you are accepted into the program, you don't have to worry about anything except for getting your life together, like for real. They got, they got counseling for you. They have, um, uh, 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 life skills training for you. And they will even get volunteers to come in and watch the kids so you can take the training. You have to get a job and go to work, right? You don't pay any bills. You don't pay for food. You don't pay for anything practically. It's practically, I mean, free. I think you may have to pay for maybe some pampers, maybe. But for the most part, you are living rent-free. You got between six and eight months to pull yourself back up and get yourself together, right? You don't have to pay for food. You don't have to pay for anything. You have to go to work and you have to save between thirty and fifty percent of your check. Now, I could tell you if that was me and all I had to do was go there and I have to, I have a place to get myself back on track? That's what I would do. I would save seventy percent of my, cause I'm, I'm thinking that they may have, uh, they may be able to go out and do some things with the kids, right? So you can, it's not a jail. You can leave the campus, but you have to be in by a certain time. You have to go to work. The kids have to go to school, which is fine. They have to do these things. And then you pay for whatever you have to pay for. But I think there's a way for them to save up to seventy, probably seventy-five percent of their pay and put it in it. What Maureen told us is that, um, most of the women that leave the house, they leave between four thousand and seven thousand dollars and they're able to get on their feet and kick off, pay their rents and things like that. But they also have other programs now because of the, 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 um, the CARES Act to help with that. I'm telling you, amazing work they're doing up there at Home of Hope. So I can see why they would be an award winner for, um, the Chamber's twenty twenty-one, um, Business Award, Small Business Award. I can see why they would be a winner. They're doing some great work up there helping these young women get back on their feet. I just think it's amazing. And so, um, I, I just love what they're doing. Anyway, to read the full list of winners, go to ajc.com. It's all there. All the winners are there. But I just had to shine the spotlight on them just a little bit more because I spent three hours on their campus on, I think it was Wednesday. And I got a chance to talk to Ma- Maureen, who runs that facility with, with her team. Um, and she loves her team. She talks about how she loves her team and how they get things done. And I think that's amazing. So, um, I can see why her, her organization was one of the winners. Alright, listen, that's all I got for you. I'm gonna go to my last song and then I'm gonna come back. I'm gonna give you my words of inspiration for the day. So stay tuned. Welcome back, welcome back. So listen, guys, that's all I got for you today. But before I go, I wanna give you my words of inspiration. Here goes. It says, "When we train our minds to radiate positive viewpoints, we will see positive results in our lives." Ooh, let me say that again. When we train our minds to radiate positive viewpoints, we will see positive results in our lives. John Faulkner said that and he was right. Here's the thing, right? You have to train your mind to look for the positive. There's always a solution, but you have to train your mind to look for that solution. If you sit back, right, and you don't think of the solutions, you won't see the positive results. I, I'm dealing with something right now. In my mind, it's like, okay, this is an issue. Cause I'm a solutions person. Like I, I like solutions. I don't like excuses. I don't like to dabble around. What is the solution so we can solve this problem? Right? That's what I look for. How big is the problem? Is it so big that it can't be solved right now? That's me. And so that's how I think. And a lot of people don't think that way. They just look at the problem and it's a problem until they figure out what the solution is later. No, let's look at the solution right now. What can we do right now to make this happen? Look at that. So when you tell me I can't do it right now, you, did you look at all the possibilities for solutions? Probably not. Cause no, people, some people just don't wanna go that deep. Me personally, I'm looking at all solutions, all the time. I'm a solutions person. Like I look for solutions for problems. So my, 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 my question to you is, will you train your mind to radiate positivity or will you just focus on the negative and let it take over? So all I got for you today. You could've been anywhere in the world, but you spent the last fifty-two minutes with me and I love and appreciate you for that. Listen, if you missed any episodes of this show, be sure to go to goodmorninggwinnett.com to listen to past episodes there. Also be sure to follow me on Facebook at Good Morning Gwinnett, follow me on Instagram at Good Morning Gwinnett, and follow me on the Twitter at GM Gwinnett the number one. GM Gwinnett the number one. And if you listen to the show on Apple Podcasts, find your favorite two episodes and give it five stars. Leave like, comment, share, and subscribe, please. I would appreciate that. And thank you again for listening. Also be sure, if you wanna support the show, which I'll appreciate that as well, go to goodmorninggwinnett.com, click on the button that says support, support. And you can click there. You can support the show by buying a book, making a donation, buying some socks, buying a bag, buying a pillow, buy something. And that's gonna help support the show and I really appreciate it. Give, listen, donate three dollars so I can go get me a nice hot cup of tea with some milk in it. Cause I like, I like milk tea, especially this time of the year, cause it's good. I know, it sounds corny, right? But I like milk tea. I do. I like milk tea. Alright, listen, y'all stay safe out there. I'll be back again Monday at ten AM, God willing. Um, hug your family if you- Hug your family if you can, tell me you love them and stay safe. And till next time, my friends, have a wonderful weekend and make it a great day. Bye y'all.
You've been listening to Good Morning Gwinnett. Make sure to tune in Monday through Thursday at ten AM Eastern Time to find out what's happening around Gwinnett. If you liked this episode, subscribe now and share with your friends. To learn more about Noise Media Network, visit noise media dot U S.